Jamie is unable to be here tonight. She let me know in advance. Domateese?
I'm there.
Eddie Harris Howard?
Yeah.
Rick Dory?
Right.
Rick Stewart?
Right.
I always want to say Aaron White, Aaron Chase. And Brent McCarthy.
Right.
And I also got a phone call from Jim King. He's not able to be here tonight. So Jamie and Kim, you still have a form? I don't have one. I'll just send Brent a piece of paper.
Let's leave it to the five. This will go on the wishes page. One being an individual with liberty and justice for all.
We have to point that the volume member.
We don't have any applications tonight, so that shouldn't. Oh, yeah, I apologize. I just, every single time. I don't know why she won me.
Okay.
Apologize, Mr. Chairman, it was Brent who made the motion. Who seconded it? Craig? Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay. Next, we're moving on to our workshop. And working, doing further work on. Guide.
Don, if you make changes to this, we sent us. Those participating, what we had.
There's, there is only a couple of changes just based on the discussion. There was a clarification. It's, it's pretty much what, what was there before. All of the documents this evening. Thank you.
This is the back.
This was in the email and it was in a prior. Yeah, it said, yep.
Chairman, your step three, they sit to my, I could determine, I was looking for the word if. Please determine if the land use area your project was located on. The map. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I read wrong. Guard. Read the sentence wrong initially. I thought it was please determine if the land.
So it's okay.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, sorry.
So the first one is navigation. This is the one Greg created.
Nice of you. Thank you.
You updated, Don?
I'm sorry.
This is the one Greg created.
Yes, this is the one that Greg created. And it's specific to commercial uses.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we've had this long thing. Consider keep posting it as just a God.
Right.
It's not. Just use something to navigate our existing ordinance. That's it. So. This, Don, has been considered.
We're all good.
This, Don, I, I just have a question for y'all. So here is the planning board homepage behind you. And there's these off to the side here. We can have documents, but this is very, very brief that was put in there when the page was brand new. And a lot of the planning board pages, if you look, they have a lot of general information on that front area. So if you could, contemplate if you would like to have some of this guidance directly when you go to that page, or if you want this attached to the document in the side.
I mean, you could attach it if you wanted to, write to commercial, you second paragraph into the line, make that a hyperlink.
Okay.
You know, commercial uses because if they're, if they're like, oh, yeah, just the second paragraph, all within it says commercial uses, you made that a hyperlink. And just link into this document. That way people could just click on it if they're looking, thinking, oh, I want a commercial, whatever, and this would help them navigate the order. And I mean, that would be a good place to put, if we come up with a subdivision plan. Again, put it there. If you have multi-family dwellings, if we have any, any kind of guide would be, again, I can create more of these guides. I think that would be the place to put them.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with the statement. I think just hyperlinks there. So people could just click and go right through the document to help them navigate the order.
Or help me, Humberto. You would say anymore or just be a link?
It would just be a link. So if you were reading that, you know, you're going to recognize, just like if you go down to Don's name, it's in blue. So you're going to theoretically think, oh, if I click that, it's going to pull up Don's email, which is what it does. So you're going to think, then you click on the commercial uses and then it would come up with commercial business guide for ordinance navigation. And then if you said, you know, subdivision guide for subdivision, following a subdivision order. So just an easy way to read on the front page to navigate without listing it separately and making it complicated.
I wouldn't know where to do.
That would be, that would be where I'd put it. But again, we don't have guides for most of those things, but we do have a whole subdivision ordinance. We could link that directly there. Because if they're doing a subdivision, they need to follow that and this would take them right to it.
And break that blue.
Yep, it'd be a little bit, then you'd make it a hyperlink to, to attach it to directly to the other document.
You're, you're in the line.
You could, yep. A lot of times they are. And I mean, there's a, there's a new cell towers. We could update that because we do have marijuana ordinance and we do have a solar farm ordinance. So we could add those in there. To approve all new solar farm, productive solar farm facilities to approve all marijuana facilities and link those directly to those ordinance. Those would stand alone down. You could even put the boring order. I mean, you think there's an ordinance. You could put the links in there and then they'd just be like, oh, that's what I'm looking for. And then right from the front page, they don't have to search anymore. Because if you remember clicking to the ordinances, they're a little bit kind of alphabetical. And they're kind of weird to navigate because they're not always called what you think they may be called. So. So I think that would.
Would it make sense to, uh, conditional use approval required for such uses as, and list them.
We could, yeah, you could, instead of narrative, that's a little hard to hold it. Yep, that would be fine. Yep. Cause then it would just be, again, these are, these are the, these are what the conditional use.
Make it easy for me.
Yeah.
Bring agreement? Craig, do you want to work for any other?
Uh, an application to be on the planning board. For any committee, board or committee. Show you. Sorry, I have.
I know, I know what they are. I didn't.
Yeah.
Think that it was in the purview of planning board. Those applications go to town manager?
Yeah, it's an application. If you wanted to be on the planning board, you go to the plan, you could go to the planning board page and there it is. Or there's other places too. I'm sure it's at the clerk's page and. So just another location. All right, I have, I feel clear on that. Guidance. Should be one on the top of your. You.
Well, this is going to be, so. I liked the way you'd linked all these things.
That's why it was online too. So.
Yeah.
You like that and that's what you all just decided to do for your, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, great, but even. For the meeting agenda, anybody that goes on, look at the agenda and those links, whatever applies. Traditionally, that's what our town council meeting, uh, agenda is doing. So we can study it at home before we get there. All of the public. Have our thoughts and order. So public, correct?
Oh. Is everyone okay with this?
We're on the conditional use subdivision. Yeah. Guidance document is number one. Second sentence, if you are unclear for project requires a CUP, I think we spell out what a CUP is, we'll use the abbreviation about it. I assume you.
Yes.
Assume that's a conditional use permit.
I'm sorry, that's near the beginning.
Number one, second sentence, if you are unclear.
Yes. Conditional use permit. I'll spell that out.
Yeah, hit the bug. We'll use conditional use application. Should that be changed? In the fourth paragraph.
I should put, I got the word permit after that, conditional use permit application.
Right. You put conditional use. Put your CUP.
Yes, and I can use. Okay.
But then it should be conditional use underlined and then application should be not.
Not underlined.
And you could link that application to the actual application. If you wanted.
So there is, there are two places that's linked.
Okay.
So here it's linked to, this is a fillable form we have online. This is what people are using right now. And this is a checklist that you had previously reviewed. And so then. There's a second. Link here. To. This, we had looked at this previously, which is a request for hearing. This is, I don't think this is going to be too much information, but what that is, is if we go to the portal, I'm looking at the screen. Really, I need to look here. So this is when you go online, you apply for an application. There's a planning board request for hearing. And it's intended, all of the information that you normally ha- have on your, on your application, aside from the details, you know, plans and that, would be filled out here. Because what happens now is I transfer it into here. So I take their written application, I transfer it into here. So we're going to encourage them to, fill this out here. And all this information should be the same. That, as we looked at previously in the request for hearing. And down at the bottom, there's still some tweaks to be made to this, but then at the bottom, you can have them attach. Uh, I'm going to make it so it's just PDF documents and that, so they can't submit it until they have the attachment. So that's something I'm still doing, working with this company on. So they can't submit it without at least one attachment. So that doesn't mean it's going to be a, a good attachment, but at least they've identified that there is something else there needs to be submitting. So that's the intention with, with that, with that request for hearing. On the, in the submitted requirements checklist, which I have, I have broken it out. I forgot I was supposed to break that out for you. So the one that was originally posted. Um, let's see here, submitted requirements, but I broke it out so that it's commercial or shoreline. And separate for the site plan, but, so the, this is the checklist they have to submit with it and, and the payment is part of that. Payment of applicable fee according to the town ordinance. Um, within a couple of days, fees for, code enforcement and plenty of applications will be paid online as well. They don't have to. They can pay cash or, you know, a check in person, but they can do it online.
Good question. I was not aware that we have municipal review committee.
Right in our subdivision ordinance.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah.
But if you don't have a subdivision.
No, but we're utilizing them to look at applications. No, but it's just, it's just staff. It's just a staff review.
We see fire chief, code enforcement, winter district, utility district, construction committee and property ownership.
So that's who we circulate applications to?
Even if it's not a subdivision.
Correct.
But that's not in the, um, ordinance anywhere.
Only in the subdivision ordinance.
Right.
But that's standard practice to circulate applications to reviewing entities. I mean, the board doesn't want to review an application that has, engineering of sidewalks. They'd want that town engineer or the town public works director to review it and make comment. And it's not necessarily written anywhere.
Okay.
And it's always advisory. Any staff input is always advisory.
Or you would kind of stare at it.
Yeah, and I've already been thanked from the police department because we have, um, the roofers is coming back and now, and if I haven't raised this to you, I'll tell you afterwards, is there's, um, a cell storage that wants to go up behind the car wash. And then there's another 50 Royal wants to put in another unit. So it's a four unit building and the police chief. So I had circulated these, just giving him heads up, you know, here's what's going on if you want to make comment. And he has, so he definitely wants to make comment because he has concerns about, um, the number of, uh, traffic incidents at that intersection with 202. And the public works director said that he wanted to look at it in conjunction with whatever physical improvements they might be doing on, you know, Royal Road or 202, if there's anything going on there. Cause I guess there is some improvements he'd like to do. Whether, where they fall in the budget timeline, I don't know, but it's that type of thing that is, is helpful to get input on.
This may be a little bit of a sidetracked at the meeting, but did you ever get settled? Whether that piece, piece of road up there is public or private?
Public.
Public.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Was quite a dispute of it.
Yes, it was. It took a little bit, but it's, it's very clear now. Very clear. The email would be, you want to email those? You can click on them and take a look at it?
Yeah, if you can.
Yeah.
The next one says submitted requirement.
So. Initially, we had looked at a document that was all on one. And the last time we talked about this, it was, there was observation that it's a lot of information and it's not necessarily, that doesn't all apply to all applications. So if you look at the information you have tonight, um, I broke it out into, a site plan checklist. So this is just for the plan. And then, checklist for shoreline, which is the standard information, shoreline on the back and then waiver provision. Or a non-residential checklist, which is the standard criteria, the non-residential and waiver on the back. So it makes it a little less daunting in appearance to someone who's doing shoreline, who's not doing commercial.
These are all top distribution.
The, the old one we looked at, you had already looked at, but this is, it's the same information just broken out. Correct, correct. The format is new. Well, because the one online is all one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, I think the one that bothered me, late plan checklist, not needed. And.
All elements or site plans in general?
I think, I think all elements.
And we have some sample site plans to look at. Because that was raised at a previous meeting, that this might be a lot.
If, if you were adding a shed, trying to do this is kind of nuts. Just because you live in the shoreline, you're 200 feet of water, you're adding it into your property. This would be a lot more than you. We don't need the, the two 24 by 36 plans to add a shed. Right? So it's. That's where I'm saying, you know, it's a gap. You're doing a subdivision, you're doing a major rebuild, something where we need the data, yeah, but. So we need to come up with, I don't know, a, a way to kind of navigate that. What is needed when they request? Because we don't want people to be like, oh, man, you know, I never want to do anything in this town.
Yeah, it would seem too cumbersome.
Like, it's so much work. It's gonna, I'm going to charge a thousand dollars just to go to the planning board to get this approved. And it's like, they're in a shed or something, you know, very, very trivial. It would be kind of dumb.
Didn't that, I don't know, you would scream when they, it's become.
You would, but when they come and ask, like, if I just give them that checklist without talking to them, that's going to seem overwhelming. But, so you have, Rick and I talked about this and you have, it's actually 14. It's, it's, there's quite a few, but they're part of the materials we received tonight. They're all examples, of site plans that might be more in keeping with what you're talking about.
Right.
So the, the intention of this was for you all to look at them and talk about what elements of these that would be the best, um, for us to use, for a small project. And I think after looking at a number of different things, like you mentioned that, um, I can't remember, it was a, it was a GIS Arc, you Arc something you mentioned that was free online.
Q I G R.
So. Well, and we got our license today. We got, signed up for the license for the town because the tax maps are all done, um, in ArcView. So, we had to have license to have that. So now, I think the easiest thing for me to do, I looked at the number of shoreline permits we've been receiving. I think I can just make up, a, a scaled sketch, um, for people. In that instance, if it starts becoming 100, that, you know, might be harder, but I could make it just like a base for them to use that to scale. But, um, looking at that, what elements would be the most important on there? What's like the more, the easiest you think to read and for someone to, to mark up? Am I saying that right, Rick?
We're back to these.
The checklist is, um, kind of daunting. If you, I mean, just, just, just read through this to think you're adding shit.
Yeah.
And it's like, wow, I mean, this is going to take me hours and hours and hours to add the vehicle and estuary and entrances and exits. Lighting details, picture type, low vision radius, intensity of light. You're going, I'm adding a shed. It doesn't have power. But I gotta show my existing house and what do I need to include? I mean, there's just, again, I get why this is on here. Ropers is coming and we're going to want probably all this because they're doing a major construction project with whole new, but if someone's just modifying their property, this seems.
Separate list.
I, I hate to have, I don't want to, I don't want to classify projects, you know, that's, that's where I'm trying to be careful and say, you know, do we make this a suggest checklist? And then we show the examples. And say, you know, if you're in the shed, this is what you want to do. If you're doing an addition on your house, this is what we're looking for. And that would kind of navigate people to a suggestion rather than a mandatory. They still have to address the 14 elements. That's in all conditional use permits. That's in our ordinance. We have to do that. They have to fill that out, even if they're adding a shed. But that should be the most onerous piece if you're adding a shed, in my mind. You know, the rest of this, I feel, it should be a lot easier to navigate. And if you gave somebody an example, that would be really useful.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to find a balance between, you're going to get the, the ropers, the storage facility and a shed for somebody adding a small addition or a deck.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense to me. And I think that having two sets of general criteria, one's more guidance and one's more criteria, that's like.
Well, if this is, if this wasn't a site plan checklist, then it kind of meant like, okay, you have to have all this stuff. Unless you're doing it for, you know, that was the question I had when I first read it is, are you going through and saying, what are you doing? And then you're checking the staff box and that's what they need to include.
Oh, this was more of a checklist, like, here's what you need. And they acknowledged they received it because they don't even do anything with the checklist now. They submit a blank copy. So to, for them to know that they have to look, check off they have it, and then I would confirm. That's the intention.
But they have to do.
Yeah.
Is what I'm.
Of course, the smaller shoreline type.
Project, you know, or somebody was, you know, turning their garage into a business in the rural zone and, you know, they're going to fix lawn mowers or something and they have to do all of this? That seems.
And set for garage or something. Do number one, two, one, one, two, five, six, seven, or something.
Yeah.
Me, if you look at some of these and then said, these are the things that are important. I could make up a much less formal document with, with the sample of the site plan, that geared towards those types of projects that you're talking about. Um, and it's all digital. I don't think it'll be too confusing, like 10,000 different applications, because we can, we can lay it out simply enough, I feel.
I mean, can we just add the, couple of things like, well, we've got applicant now and we put some other additional boxes that say applicable. The applicant can make a determination whether lighting is going to be. Yeah, that's true. And then perhaps if we're going to have them for shoreline, we've got them for non-residential, maybe even build, incorporate the site plan requirements, into this specific document. So. So it's like, oh, they have a master that they get, oh, I'm a one, I'm a five. So it's right there on this one page form.
I, I thought the applicable, not applicable, and I missed the second part. I apologize.
Include the site plan requirements in the same guide, in the same sheet. So when we get to, I mean, we're talking subdivision, solar farms, anything big is going to require, you know, probably being tied into the site plan checklist. But once we get into those examples, I'll provide it that, that list, that plan checklist is probably 50% of this or less. We could incorporate that and go on.
Well, you'd say down below the four, an addition. The shore ahead or whatever, these are the ones you would have.
Yes.
He's referring to the.
Or a shed or something, I think, for. It's, it's going to be residential, small residential project.
Yeah.
Small or large residential project, small commercial project, large commercial, I mean, maybe we make like four categories. Yeah. And I like the fact that we make it not applicable though, because then Don would. Yeah. And I like the fact that you made it not applicable though, because then Don would be reviewing it. Or Mark, and they'd be like, no, that's applicable, exactly, you know, you'd be able to make the call and be like, and they would, you could kind of work with them. And that's where I'm saying, you could almost take a look at it and just be like, you checked the non-applicable box, and what is your project and what's applicable and what is it?
We have the wrong description, that Don, Don, the applicant, a list of things that, minimal thing we needed. And to be honest, with this tool is wrong.
Absolutely.
And applicant didn't respond, but you said.
Oh, I know, yeah.
You said that you didn't, uh, respond, so that's, I think that's what we're talking about.
Yes. Yeah, we we've had applicants come in with a crane on the ground, with no dimensions on it at all, and we're kind of like, what are we supposed to do with this? So we we want to give them some guidance, so we gotta get away from that, but again. I don't want to go to, they need to supply, you know, days worth of work or hiring an engineering firm to. You know, to build a shed on their property because the requirements are, you have to do all of these things.
You had a rich section, uh.
Back what I think I'm hearing, is to include a a column that indicates not applicable. And if it, and if it clearly is applicable, then I would communicate that with the applicant. They can always come anyways, I always tell them if they disagree, because it's you all that actually decide. In general, I I find that they wouldn't agree with, disagree with staff, except for that one instance. But, you know, ultimately, it is up to you, but yeah, I could give them some guidance on that, and then we'd add the site plan checklist back in. Correct. And then I would go through with applicants on smaller projects and just like, check off the not applicable ones. Free one for a small project, so they're not looking at the whole list, I'll go right in red or something and mark it off, so.
Well, you might even have some checklist pre-filled out. You could just kind of be like, okay, I'm, you know, gonna take him on the computer, just put the non-applicables. Like, oh, if somebody comes into this, I'm gonna get you out of this pile. You have a little, you know, set of folders or something, you can hand them the sheets or something like that. That way, it's just, you're already pre-helping them. Uh, and we could try to, I mean, if we're gonna go that route, I guess we can go to the point of saying, can we put these in categories? But again. I I kind of go back and forth because I'm thinking, okay, if we put these into categories, say there's four different categories, we go with small residential, large residential. Small, commercial, large, commercial, well, it depends on the type of commercial, it depends, so there's gonna be cases where. It it may be that that some of these things are needed to make that decision, so it's gonna be a case by case, they go, oh, it's a small commercial. I'm growing marijuana, it's like, well, lighting is absolutely critical. And, you know, security is absolutely critical, the ordinance says that some of these things are gonna be needed. That are not necessarily needed if they were doing lawnmower repair. So, and by starting to spell out small residential, uh. Small, non-residential, we're doing something that potentially conflicts with that zone essentially, so that'd be good.
So, could this be. Listed in ways so that everything that's required is at the beginning. Like.
Yeah.
There's things in here that we're gonna need on every application, so for all those, please, you know, provide blah, blah, blah. And then have another, you know, below it.
Yeah.
Whatever is applicable, please fill out.
Yeah.
You know, provide applicable documents or whatever.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
Thing is, classically, when you came in to see the planning board, the code enforcement officer would tell you what you needed. So perhaps in this case, Don could check off what you need.
Yeah.
And then you could see to it, okay?
You're trying to make this so that. This is done prior to your interaction. So this is going to remind me before you have to have to do it.
Um, it's it's uncommon for for an application to hit my desk and I know nothing about it. So I'll have usually some level of interaction, and so I can give them guidance. Um, I think one time since I've been here has that happened, where just an application just came in.
I've done three, yeah.
You know what you're doing.
I mean, I, I was just curious, and please, I, my role here is kind of vague. I mean, we all decided that we were all gonna be the liaison to each individual board, so what does that mean? So if I over, what?
You're the lucky one, you got apple.
Oh, yeah. So anyway, if I overstep or something, just say, I won't get nose out of joint. Okay, but it it just seems to me that if we're gonna use this, rather than have someone go. Into the pitfall of scratching their head, and do I need to put the lighting in, do I not, what what do I have to do? She's worried I'm gonna drink over, um, you know. Is there a reason that when Don answers, you know, you have some interaction, and then before you hand this to them. You just check off what they need. That would.
Then you put, you you play both, not applicable and staff, or you.
Yeah.
You did it, so that way you'd be like, oh, here's what you need. And then whatever order you put it in was whatever order made sense to you. You still could organize it with what you would need for applications kind of first, and then kind of like, and you could just. No big X, like take this section out and up check the.
If it's a shed, you might just go shit.
Yeah.
Exactly, and then it just makes your life easy. But again, so the order, I think it'd be whatever you thought made sense.
I I feel comfortable with that, I guess I want to make sure that it, the list includes everything that you. Think that you would like, so that if things aren't necessary, I can check that off, but am I missing anything that may be necessary? You mean, you can take an application and try it, you mean, is that?
No, I don't.
But it wasn't in a separate form, it was just, I just, yeah, so. Yeah. So it gets to you as you need it. So I need the applicant to use it, but I guess w- once it's all filled out, you guys don't necessarily need to review it, because all the information is there, is that what you're. Unless they're asking for a waiver for something, and then we do that separate. Okay. There's quite a few piling up, yeah.
Are you saying that the, that shouldn't be on site, that they should come in and see you and you would give that? That what we're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If indeed it shapes out of this, this is a set of basics, yeah, we'll put that on the site, that's gonna be minimal, we expect. And there's no issue with shed versus the subdivision, you know. Uh, that's, that's not. Well, you could put it on site and just note, please come in and see the town planner concerning filling out this form. And and this this form is intended for you to know, uh, what you need to prepare, the information you need.
Right. I like that interaction. Using this form.
Do, mostly, yeah. It's helpful.
Stick it on there.
Helpful if they comment.
Simple format. Always gonna go on and say, yeah, well, that's all I need, and then. I'd rather see that be a step that comes to you, put it in there. Any project you need, talk to.
Yeah, I highly encourage people to come and talk to me.
And to go over that one.
And use for those small projects, they do, because they're not, they're not really sure what to do, so they're coming anyways for, you know. And then say.
Yeah, can can I swing back to number eight again, uh, about this, um. Not being a wise guy, but this, um, municipal youth committee that we really don't have. Okay, there's no official committee ad hoc or otherwise. Um, but the problem you've, that I see here is. You know, the police chief doesn't really need to know if somebody wants to put a shed in their backyard and won't have standing to speak on the subject. In front of the board, for instance. Okay, I mean, if if something isn't in. The, um, public water supply or shoreline zone, a bill and Dan don't have standing. Wouldn't think.
Well, this will just notify, right?
Yeah, just send to the agenda that has the application linked to it. So they get, they get a, an email and says, here's what's coming up, and they look at it, and if they want to make comment, they do. And if it's not anything that's either in their purview or that they have comments on, they have to.
Point in this case, just drop, useful, you, you, right, the materials will be circulated into the NISL.
Okay.
And then you use the next sentence, you're fine. Me, it's just changing it because it's not a committee.
Yeah, I just, it already, yes, no problem.
We're enough, we're good enough committees.
Right, then, I think you're fine, but you're just, you're doing that, like you said, the buyer's not gonna comment, well, maybe coming on a shed, but, you know, maybe not. Depending on what it is that they're proposing.
So I take that sentence right off. Hey, where we review by staff, for plumbers.
Yes.
Yeah, so just take out.
And so this may include, and then we.
Yeah, it's take that, you should definitely have, definitely.
The whole, okay, I hear you.
Because it says, it says planning boards are reviewed by staff with preliminary completeness, that doesn't say what staff. And you could include the buyer's complete, but you're gonna review it first, because you don't want them to routinely complete. Project. That's, they're still staff. So it's still covered you.
So I think we take that sentence.
You take that out, we. Yeah, you're, since it is, you're gonna review it first, and then you circulate it for them.
Now we take out, but.
Yeah. The the intention is just that it's entities from the town who have a background that would be helpful for the, for the planning board to make decisions.
Doing something with NISL, tying in. Sideboard, tying in, or five, whatever, you know, then it'd be good to have the towns. You know, if they're saying, oh, my driveway's going with this fire hazard, that could be a problem.
Notification of individuals, staff people up to Dawn, basically, who needs to know.
Exactly. You know, she could decide if they're used to seeing all of them, you send all of them, and if they're like, not me, not me, not me.
Yeah, yeah, they've been sending it to all of them and no one's had a concern.
It's, we don't get that many applications, so.
Okay, we're okay with that. So we're gonna have the. I have one more thing, if if you, if I, if you.
Go ahead.
Curiously, if you'll indulge me, it says, all clearing activities require submission of a revegetation plan. Now, there's some other comment in here that I lost track of, but remember when you say this. That Winthrop has completely, uh, divoted itself of any responsibility, uh, with forestry.
For timber harvesting.
For timber harvesting. So, and you, and there is such a thing in timber harvesting as clear cut.
We don't deal with those, they don't even come to us, they go right to the state.
So you won't interpret a clear cut timber harvest as a clearing?
Nope, because it wouldn't come to this board.
And they're not doing clear.
Uh, no, not in close.
Well, there's been a few.
Yeah, there've been a few, like.
They're not legally.
They're not legally allowed.
They're the, they're the ones.
That's revegiation.
When I used to have the hotel, I'd ride up and down the lake on, on my time off and. Take a couple pictures, send them into back to Mark, you know, what's going on here, sure enough. Okay, so you have enough reading data, Tom?
I feel like I have enough, yep, I'll make some updates. Yep. Uh, we already talked about the request for hearing. So that's just basic information for any application, if they're coming with for a shoreline permit or a commercial development or subdivision, it's all that basic information that you need. Is that's just what that request for hearing is, if it's a sketch, and they want to come in and just, you know, have a discussion with you. Um, I I think I handed this, um, sidewalk protocol out prior, but I wasn't certain. And all that was, was taken from your, um, I laws and then, you know, just some notes below, so. Apologize, I didn't know if you, if you had taken an action on it and said, yeah, we want to use this or or not at that last meeting.
You put no sidewalks during mud season?
Um, if you would like me to go ahead and, oh, and that one. Uh, the sidewalk protocol. And if you, if you do find that acceptable, maybe we could append it to the bylaws. So a a motion to that extent would be, um, appropriate, if you're ready to do that this evening, it doesn't have to be this evening.
What's a quorum on your board?
Four.
So, I'm not sure if I missed it, but you do say you shouldn't have individual conversations with other board members.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you really shouldn't have conversation with less than four board members present. You know, on a sidewalk, on a five acre track, you can end up with half of you over here and half of you over there. Yeah, well, yeah.
But it's just staying here, we have to stay as a group for that reason.
Yeah, since you can.
I just thought, you might want to stick the word quorum in there somewhere. Yeah, if you have site visit on the, the side of a hill, it could be a slippery slope. I, you know, it doesn't matter to me, but I'm.
Technically, well, you're not making decisions, but I think it does still, it has to be noticed, it's open to the public. And I believe you do have to have a quorum, but that's an excellent question.
Yeah, you do. Well, you don't, if you meet individually, like when I was on the zoning board, we we wouldn't. We would ask the applicant permission to go and look at the property, and if they said yes, we would go individually, so you're not risking. Uh, probably don't have to be that sticky about it, but you do need to be able to swear that you did discuss it, you know.
I'd follow up on that, because we we're now saying we're gonna do the sidewalks prior to a meeting, and I've been indicating that to applicants, um. We don't necessarily know if we're gonna have a quorum at the sidewalk. I don't.
Do we know as an act of must do?
It's, it definitely needs to be noticed, so we do that. Yeah, that's the question, that I'm gonna confirm. I've had.
That's trouble waiting.
You got.
It's only a public meeting if you have a quorum.
So, I agree, but.
Um, I've had some inconsistency between sidewalk and site visit, is there a preference? Or another term? Yeah, okay.
Yes, site visit.
I mean, uh, on zoning board, we always found it a lot easier to have individual site visits, because we would have the case coming. And then when we had time, an individual would scoot over there, we would inform the property owner ahead of time, that we would be coming around at random. At our convenience, and they would obey it generally, and we would just stop when we had a chance and look around the lead. And that never caused a problem in the 30 years I was on zoning.
I'm not disagreeing, we, I did it a number of times, the, I, board chair, we did it. The training we had a year ago said you can't do that, it's a lawyer's thing, you can't do.
The the state.
Just saying, what they said was, you can't do that, that's what we said, oh, okay, we'll do a, an official sidewalk.
Have advised by town attorneys in the past that it would be okay to go individually, so I wonder if they're tightening it up more recently? Because they were very clear.
It was very clear.
Yeah.
It was even quite fascinating, you saying we can't go to the site, yes, you cannot go to the site, it has to be publicly noticed. Kind of like, well, that was.
Not a, well. Everybody in the public can vote.
And.
And well, no, if they're prevented.
Say that if you're doing it. Such and such a day, such and such a time, you do believe, now maybe wrong, that that is informing the public that's what you're doing. And they consider it an an imitation of.
For a site.
Yeah.
Individual. Well, yeah, again, I, it was the lawyer speaking, so I'm not, I'm just saying they were they were very clear in that. That that you can't, you've never had.
Might have changed Andy because I do remember when you used to be able to.
Yeah.
We've been around for a long time.
Well, uh, I, you know, uh, my part is just to have. Individual site visits and if someone's house, then let's change the policy. I mean, it's just, it's a big burden. And you have two meetings a month, you have tons of work. Okay, and now you're going to have to schedule a third meeting for a site visit when at least four or five of you can get together. And then if the public shows up. They're going to be running around the property, the property owner is not going to be happy. I mean, it's a mess. I would just leave it. If it was me. I would just leave it as an individual visit. Um, with, you know, you just ask the applicant that individuals can. Visit the property at their convenience. And if the applicant says yes, that's what you do. And if if he says no, then you have to have an organized meeting.
Knocked on the door.
Because we know that they technically told us. Yeah. And I'm gonna.
We have had a few applicants that you wouldn't want to visit by yourself. We have had a few applicants that you wouldn't want to visit by yourself.
Yeah, I mean, just using the recent example, we just went to two properties. The first property, I don't think a sidewalk was critical. The second property, absolute. We got facts and information there that no way we would have gotten out. You know, by doing individual sidewalks, because the property is unoccupied. The the builder and architect were there to answer questions and to explain the project. If we wouldn't have organized that. I don't think I don't think we've gotten any information. Uh, that we that we received. So I think that was. That was a good use of a sidewalk. Or site visit. So uh, we're the first one we could have done individually and probably gotten similar information. You know, even without input from the landlord. Well, I I kind of agree with that, I guess. I mean, they told us not to, and I feel bad about. Doing that and. Dang it, but I don't think all projects, we've said this too, not all projects need a sidewalk.
No.
Or site visit. If someone's doing a shed or something like that, we don't, we don't necessarily need to see that.
In some cases, we can just drive by on the road, that's.
Well, it depends on what they're doing. Yeah, sometimes they're only fifteen here, you know, if they're on Memorial Drive, they're right there, you can see them pretty much most of the time. So it's like you don't have to even get off the road.
Seems like the ones where you have to decide about the moving it to the best best extent practical is. That usually something you like to do, yeah.
I would say anything that's subjective, I think you're gonna, and really we probably should try to schedule something. To be an official cycle. I think that might be the the standard.
Not at all, it's true, she won't. And uh, not almost sure there. But probably they were able to help to rent it. Relative to moving a property that is so bad or. You're right, yeah, site builders worth.
Yeah, gold, they can be, they can be very valuable to get past all of the, let's understand the property and when it's the best extent practicable. You, that's an evaluation, right? And seeing the site is very helpful to know because what's a practical. At one site is not going to be the same at another. So.
To append it. Um, to append to the um, yes, accepted it to be appended to your bylaws.
May I make another? May I make another comment?
We have the planning board sidewalk protocol provided by Donald Knight and have that appended to the. On board bylaws.
We're going to call it a site visit.
Site visit.
I have a comment.
No comment. A bullet number one, two, three, second sentence. Uh, I think that sentence should be removed because we've already stated that. That the board, well, I don't want to, it says no final decision. That makes it sound like we're going to discuss a decision.
Hmm.
So let's just take that out. So it's not confusing. We've already stepped up. We're not going to deliberate or make any decision in the top. So I think it's just, I was just removing that entire second sentence.
No, you give me the reference again specifically. Third bullet.
Dark black bullets.
Yeah.
Setting sentence, remove entire. Right, yeah, you could take out that second one. The second and third sentence.
I think it was just to warn us that. You shouldn't do that. Probably right. You know.
But um.
Those last two. Sentences are in there to remind us that we don't want to make any final decisions or we don't want to be pressured into making final comment.
Right, we shouldn't be making any decisions.
We shouldn't be, and that's what it's telling us. I'd I'd say leave it in. It tells me when I'm looking through, okay, I'm going out for a site visit and I see there, oh, yeah, we can't. Can't be, can't make a final decision.
Before you're there and somebody says, oh, yeah, we like this and everybody else goes, yep, then you made a decision.
Yeah.
The third bullet on the top down. Third triple I says the board shall not deliberate or make decisions during a site. So I'm thinking it's redundant and and by saying no final decisions, it kind of implies that you might make. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's in the top, so I think I just take it out.
Yeah, take that whole ball and off.
I got it, and I'm also going to just follow up. I believe. Meeting is a quorum is I I think that's just across the board, but I'm going to double check in that case.
One time, can't get a forum, it's a reschedule thing. And I think you're going to know who's going to be there.
Well, we're trying to do them at five before the meeting.
We're going to know who's going. Only got two things going, maybe.
Well, we can make that decision.
Yeah, yeah. So we should all set a forum.
But by doing that, we're putting people off another week or two weeks.
But I don't think that's going to happen.
Well.
We can't get four people with.
Uh, my question, guys, if you're not going to make any decisions, why do you got to have a forum?
That's when I'm going to just go check. But we also found out that a subcommittee, even though they don't make decisions, had to be noticed. No, but it didn't have a quorum, it just had to be noticed. Um, it maybe maybe we could. Not have a quorum and just walk that's noticed. Or site visit, I'll find out.
Yeah, just. Try to keep in mind, this doesn't have to go in here. But when there's a presentation by a licensed architect, a certain licensed surveyor, a certified engineer. And and they are telling John or you during the meeting that this is the way it is. You know, I'm not sure site visit is always called for. You know, now it's. We on the zoning would never had a site visit. Where a licensed engineer, surveyor. Misrepresentatives. We have had a few where. Misrepresented things. So, you know. All I'm saying is it's something to be. Pausious about, don't want to get people's notes at a joint, it's the surveyors and. You know, that kind of thing. That's all.
Oh, it's a good point, but. As a G E B, what is this, they got maximum extent practice? That is very subjective.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if it's subjective, you've got to go take a look.
That's well, that that's what I'm saying. That type of request is where I think it it's not. That's not an engineer, that's not an architect, that's the homeowner saying, I want to put the house here. Um, so and that's subjective is how far it's practical to move it back. Um, to, you know, can we move it back to the hundred foot line or not? So that's where I think, I think those are probably going to be our our biggest site visit, like. Things where we really should do a site visit. Otherwise. I don't think it's as critical. I think if you drive by, we could do the road, look at the maps and you get almost all the same information.
What about if I just check with Rick? When the applications come in after the deadline, I'll check with Rick and and say, you know, these seem obvious. What what do you think about? And just confirm, okay?
Phil. Do we have a protocol about going to the Z B A first or the planning board?
Z B A first.
Okay, like, only problem I see that is. Like in the case you have to move the maximum extent back. You know, you could tell them they got to be within a hundred feet, but if they hit the street, they're going to come to zoning board. So.
No, we wouldn't, we would never approve it. So we would never, they can't come to us. And say, well, if they're going to hit the street, if the street's ninety feet back, you could say, okay, it's a twenty foot offset, you can move it back to, you know, the back of the house.
So you wouldn't put them in a position where they had to come to E B A, you just say, no, maximum sentence twenty feet from the street, that's where you got to go.
And and if they needed, if they need a variance, they dodged the sentence to the Z B A before they came down. And we can say no. You know, because if they need it, we can't grant a barrier.
Right.
The zoning board of appeals.
Right, and the zoning board can't grant a variance unless it's a hardship, so.
Right.
You would have to. Create the hardship by telling them, ask to go back further. And you just. You probably wouldn't do that. You just say, we know.
You can't do, you can't do what you're proposing.
Yeah.
It's basically what is going to end up being a problem.
Well, unless you go to zoning board and.
That that's the thing, that's why they have to go to the Z B A first, in my mind.
Yeah, the planning board can't create the hardship.
And then they would go to. Then they would appeal it to the zoning board.
Well, they could, that hasn't happened yet, but.
And other places have had that happen where they go to the planning board, the planning board says no, and they go, oh, I don't get what. And off they go.
That's a, that's a good thing because that gives the citizens a place where they can go for, what is it, still fifty bucks? Instead of having to go straight to court, you know.
With it, that's right, that's the intersection between.
And uh, but. It's still, even on the zoning board, it's a quasi judicial process, okay, you can't be just relaxed and, you know. I'm not done. I'm sorry, I held you guys up.
Yes. Thank you.
Let's just all the things that come in.
Yep. So this, there's a document. That you have. That um, not asking you to review tonight, but I've mentioned it in the past, the town of York. Does um, they have a form and I've had attorneys say, you know. That some towns do this, where you guys have to do a finding of fact. But we can actually make the application such that the applicant fills it in and and presents the facts in a format which then you could. Adopt, adopt as amended or or deny the application. So what uh, what what I'm trying to do here. It's an application with a lot of red and that's just basically. Try to take and create that draft findings for the applicant to fill out, that that will come to you. As opposed to me trying to fill it all out. It'll be their words. And then you determine if it's accurate or if there are changes that need to be made. And the checklist. So then, yeah, because what I've done in other instances is I've created some findings for you. With conditions, um. But then, but I created it and sometimes I took the wording from the applicant, but this is, this puts the onus on the applicant. Basically.
Well, the checklist.
Those are materials. Yes. So the checklist is to make sure that you have all the information you need to make a decision. And this is saying, this is what the decision is based on. Here's how we do and don't meet the requirements of the ordinance.
They should be available, so we.
Correct, and if they can, then they don't meet the ordinance. That's part of it. Yep, so this. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it says planning board approval criteria. I think that's really messed with our ordinance. Planning board approval criteria. Initial use permit, they have to leave the. Two points that is any initial use period end of story. I see you're the thing like sufficient, you know, water, municipal water, road and traffic, those are all in the fourteen point.
Lee, this is York's form and I actually have crafted one for. Um, Winthrop that is specific to your criteria.
Use this, you're saying they use.
The concept.
This as a guide, and I don't have a problem if you put the burden on them to answer those fourteen questions.
Yeah.
Because that's what I think is required. They need to answer those fourteen questions. That's just, that's that's what they need to answer. Because that's what a conditional use permit requires. That's what assesses our.
Yes, I do. I I hear you and I do have um. It's not going to be open it, but I have one that's this format with your ordinance, the fourteen criteria.
We can add stuff here that's not a new.
No, 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 correct. It's just particular to Winthrop, so.
We can't use some of the things they have here the way they're written because that's not what's in our.
No, correct. So the one that I filled out is not, is different from this, but it's particular to Winthrop. But I wanted to see if you're comfortable with the applicant doing that. Because that in that direction, I'll finish that form and that's what they'll use. They'll do the request for hearing. Submit all the materials that go along with that. And then this draft finding is how they say whether they do or don't meet the require. The the individual criteria, some of them being the fourteen. I was trying to, but this is saying I'm not able to open these things.
By that gone and gotten so old, I used to remember them by heart.
Yep. So page fifty-three on this version. Section E factors applicable condition. They, I mean, we'll maintain safe and helpful conditions. You know, we'll establish and maintain in order uh, in in accordance with the approved erosion set of a control land. Will ensure access to the site from existing proposal roads is safe and adequate. Proposed use will not. Will not cause or aggravate undue undue havoc congestion. So there's, I mean, there 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 are the same things just written differently, but this is the way they're written in the order. So.
Yes, I've taken it directly from the ordinance. I don't know why it's not letting me connect.
Before that you, that's been filled out. And again, when you have the applicant fill it out, some of the time there's just be like, doesn't apply, doesn't doesn't apply, doesn't apply. And you're like, uh, no. You're digging up your, you know, stormwater applies, rain applies, site impacts apply, so. Yes, that's that's already included in the site plan checklist and kind of like the Apple feed, all of that's the application part. And then basically you're just putting the whole point out of that.
I'm I'm going to pass this around.
Exactly.
This is more um.
I mean, they listen, I mean, they're they're showing you. So they're showing you in red, kind of like how you might answer it.
Right.
And that's fine. We just put those fourteen points as how you might enter. That that would just be helping them. Nothing wrong with that. Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that, but we can change the words of the ordinance if that's in the ordinance, right?
This is the one we're working on, Rob.
Yes, yeah, and I uh, I apologize, I can't bring that up. I'm not sure why it's not letting me into the system. But if that concept of the applicant will put the the data in and you will look at it and say. It's correct, it's incorrect. First of all, if it's factually correct, and then you determine that actually meets the requirements of the ordinance, and then you would adopt the findings. As presented or with with changes, um, and then also conditions that would go along with that. Yeah, so and so it's streamlined and it would be consistent in format, so you know what you're looking for. Yep, and um, and Brendan has suggested, and I do have some draft motions put together, so, you know, at the meeting. Motions put together, so, you know, at the meeting, you'd be like, well, you know, a motion to accept the minutes, motion to accept completeness. How to adopt a, a finding of fact. And then for minutes, just, just attach the, the findings. Yeah, so that was still the direction I'm heading in.
This is a description of, of. What the requirement is, we don't have an explanation of what the, what the end result will be. So I'm not really sure what you're looking for, so like. Are we looking, does that? Would a line like that? For the answer to that, the. Handwritten. Explanation by the applicant?
Yeah.
Or a waste water disposal plan?
Application, yeah, so they have to show how they need it.
Of the applicant for that.
Statement, that, that, the statement, finding state, that statement is them making an affirmative determination, just like we have to, they're basically writing this for us. That, that after you review the application, you've had discussions, public has had input. You make that finding of fact that the project has proposed will not have an adverse impact on. Yes.
So, so if I was an applicant. And I was filling this out. As a lawyer, as a lawyer, I would say, well, yes.
Yeah.
That sentence is divided back into the. That is it.
Yeah.
We're basically providing them. Having them write their, write the approval before we give it.
Well, I actually wasn't intending to fill it in. I was intending to state the criteria.
Say this is our sample.
Yeah.
Not filling it in.
No.
What I was just gonna ask is, I take. You know, if you wanted to add some red text to that, and give them a better description, and kind of like how to answer the question. Because we do have the fourteen points. You know, we'll, we'll maintain safe and helpful condition. You know, we'll be, I'll pick on one that I, I pick on all the time, we'll ensure that the site design is in, is in. Compliance with all flood hazard protection regulations, and all proposed constructions will not fail or not affect the water body's ability to store floodwaters. And then. Do we give them a couple of sentences to say? You know? Is your elevation, is the elevation of your property above the base flood elevation taken from Stevens Map Service Center? And even the LinkedIn there? So now they know how to get that in.
Yeah.
To their property. And. I, I'm, I'm just asking that as a question, because that's what it feels like this red stuff is doing.
That, that is what it's doing here.
And, and I'm thinking, did you wanna consider adding some of that to this? Or not?
So the way it's currently is, is they're supposed to address each of the criteria. On their own, but they rarely do.
Right, all the time, it's not applicable, not applicable, not applicable, it's like you're fifty feet from the lake, there's a flat line between you, it is applicable.
The shot on the moon.
Yeah, I said that sometimes.
I mean, I can. I can craft some language, my only concern is that everyone will just, just leave it just as it is. Oh, it's already filled out.
They have no idea what. You really have. Right?
Yeah, I'm confused.
We're here, and. We have to talk about it together, to figure out what we want, so. A general person that's never done a. Project, they don't have the slightest clue what the response is.
I'll put some general text in there, and then they can amend it, uh, to, to their project specific. I'll make a general statement, and then they, I can do that. I don't, I just don't want, it's. Can't be the same statement for every application, there's gonna be some variance there, so.
Think, think as a simple thing. Pushing, we don't show this one again, that's going to trend.
Yeah.
Cause that was confusing to everybody.
Okay.
Let's show this one to everybody and say, this is what you're proposing, it's still a draft, it's not done. But that's more of what you're proposing, and then maybe we add some red text to the fourteen bullets. And then give people some guidance. But I think that is, that makes a lot of sense to me, because that, well, that would be what you're providing us as a package, would be all the information in the same order, in the same. And then responding to the fourteen things, they're doing all the things we would need. To make a decision on their project. They may not do it right, but they would at least have the opportunity and the checklist to make, or the, the opportunity and, and follow the guidelines. To be able to make it. Something we could at least try to evaluate.
Yeah, and then anything that deviates, that you, you could then work with them so they can make changes, or bring more information, or what have you, but that would be, yeah. I will, and everyone can just throw away that one with the red text, I didn't need to confuse. Put it right in the round.
She had an example that she'd been working. That's what we want to do. We want to get that out there. Throw that one away, they do that.
May I ask a question? Can you tell me again, the purpose of it? Cause I'm not getting it.
All the findings?
The last one, yeah. Why are we adding and adding and adding?
Do you mind if I? Mister Chairman? Go ahead, so, the. The board has to make a decision based on the ordinance, you know, you have a certain jurisdiction in these regulations, and the applicant says, this is what I'd like to do with my property. Um, here are the facts, here's what I wanna do, and here's the information that you're gonna use to make that decision, here's a plan. Um, here's a, here's evidence that I have right title of interest in the property, like all the checklist things, and here's my fee. Um, and here's the criteria that I have to meet. And that last document. Use it, you'd use all the information that you've received to make conclusions. Like, here's the facts, and here's the conclusions.
Last page of the.
Yes, it's the final, it's the decision.
Now, okay, that's it.
That's what that would be, is you would just adopt it. You know, either as it's presented, if it's a hundred percent correct, or with amendments, or you might deny the application, but that could be the basis. For which you make a decision.
We were talking about this. Okay, that was perfect. This is, it's okay. But how do you know it's a, what did you? It seems as though you should say. Someone. It sold you that.
Well, so if it's, it's a project that's on sewer. We're gonna have Dan Wells weigh in on it, right, so there'll be, there'll, there's just gonna be a fact that says this is what, you know, the, the system is that's being proposed, we're gonna tie in. Blah, 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 you know, some facts around it.
Right.
Um. And maybe, you know, what Dan's response might have been. And that, then you can say that it will meet the standard, the four, you know, one of the fourteen standards by virtue of those facts. So your conclusion is gonna be that it does meet the standard because the facts that have been given to you.
All, because it was checked out.
Yes, correct.
We're gonna say, five. Cause we're saying, did it? Then. Didn't mean anything, does it? Say I did it. I looked, I thought it was good.
Yeah.
Lot of focus around. And there were the whole design rooms and everything. Lot of detail around. After we got through with the item. What were they proposing? The greatest fund, the active property. Lots of power and utility on it, and each project's gonna be a different level of utility. And we're working, we're working out of a.
Different person's gonna say, okay, well, that's what I wanted to know, if we, we should be stating that.
What you're trying to create is a document that we've done to us. That we see the state of facts.
Yep.
Including more than even pressure, that, that, that document, that went our review and our prediction.
And I've made them for you in the past, we didn't get to the point where we were adopting them. But, um, you've seen the format before, so it won't be brand new, it'll just be that the applicant's the one that's, that's. Proving, approving the statements.
But you actually.
No, I can, I can.
You want the applicant actually be. Able to fill out the finding of facts for.
They have to be able to state how they do. Yeah, they have to state how they meet the requirements, which they have to anyways. They have to show you that they meet the requirements of the ordinance, so you can't approve the application. So this is just a format, a different format for them to submit it. I'll, I will. Make changes to someone I haven't submitted, and maybe. Uh, what I'm hearing is you think that it's gonna be, um. Complicated for some applicants, but I think that I, I will lay it out such that it, that you will look at it and, and maybe not think that. Or maybe you will, but I'll, I'll have it for you to look at.
Then to us. To our review, then why are we even reviewing?
Because you have to see if they're correct. Those statements, they're, they're, you may not find their statements adequate.
That their statement is incorrect, in our opinion. Remember.
Yeah.
In this case, with the finding of facts.
Yeah, it's, it's. By them. Based on what the board decides.
Some plans should not have to. We send them back to do the homework. And there were several, I don't know, just one, several items. They haven't met. But that's what the intent was, for us to look at what's happening. And decide if we agree. There was something we did agree. I think that's the tool we're trying to.
So it just had that communication. Is this where they're gonna answer that?
What they're supposed to answer.
This document?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the board ha, by state statute, you have to. Draw a conclusion, you have to make a findings of fact, here's all the facts that have been presented to us. And then you're gonna conclude whether or not it meets the requirement of the ordinance or not, and that has to be all in writing. So that if it goes to court, and a judge has to make a decision, they have to know how you came to your decision, and based on what information. So this is something that should be done for every application, and we went through it a couple times where it was tedious, we went through every single one. Then we talked about, well, we could just adopt it, you know, adopt the finding as written, or as amended, amended, and this just takes that a step further and says. Well, they're gonna write it, and then you're gonna see if you adopt it or not.
So they're gonna go through the list, and it's. Applicable. They're gonna.
Make a statement.
Put why, if it's not, well, it's gonna be on here.
Right.
So basically, this is everything in that checklist.
Yep, and, and this is just. And if they put non-applicable for all fourteen items.
They're gonna have.
Hopefully, well, hopefully Donald will see that before it comes out to me, like, no, try again.
This really, this is really answering those checklists.
Exactly.
Okay, I guess.
So I will, um, pull up an, an example of one I did prior, and then this template that I'm creating, and I'll give you both for the next meeting to look at and see if it's coming together.
We look on. We created a redundancy here for applicants, so if I'm writing a narrative, I'm gonna. Replace my shed in the shoreline zone. And I'm gonna have a contractor come in and put some hay bales in, and here's how we're gonna do it, here's where it's located. They've got that narrative all written up, now they then have to take excerpts from that right up and answer those. Permits, findings, facts, and when he says, you know, will not affect adversely to the water quality, they're gonna say. Yes, this won't affect water quality, because we're gonna be putting in erosion. Erosion control days. And they've already stated that in their, their map and narrative in their application. We're asking them to do more.
Well, we haven't asked them to state it anywhere yet, so in the narrative, a narrative is usually a quick summary, if they're going on with all that detail, they don't need that in the narrative, they need to summarize a few sentences. Depending what the project is, and then the information goes in with the actual. The facts.
Replacing that shit. And then all the facts would go into addressing, how are you controlling erosion? How are you, you know, how do you meet flood plain, how do you meet the? Water quality, say that might not be applicable, but. So shouldn't this be actually in the application we give them to complete?
Essentially, this is the application now.
Cause all the name, if you look at the front, it's like all their names, site location, map, I mean, that is gonna basically replace, I think, the existing application of common levels of shedding.
That's the idea, that's the idea, because, um. What's happening now is I'm leaving things out of the narrative. You know, and sometimes they address it, sometimes they don't, sometimes it's vague, but this way it draws their attention right to it, well, you have to make a statement to it, so. You're not gonna omit that information.
The narrative.
I feel like, I feel like, so if somebody, if your average person. And they, and they require erosion control methods. They have no slight concept what that is in any shape. So if you ask that question, like, I, I'm hiring Seth. To do my thing, and hopefully, I don't, I assume he knows what he's doing, because he's. That's, that's the extent of their. It's the extent of their ability to answer that question.
You as a board have to make a decision, the requirements event, so Seth's doing it is not an acceptable answer.
I think right now, in the shoreline zone. You have to have a. Contractors.
Certified.
Certified. If you say, then you're.
Example of any, any number of aspects of the specific.
You know, just so your contractor certified, that's the only if you can give as an applicant.
You know, I'm hired, well, that contractor's required.
So the contractors should have a plan, they're coming to come to your project, and they're gonna do this, and they're gonna excavate, well, they're professional, they're gonna have a plan of what they're gonna do.
Like, and that's. I guess. Some guidance on it is to, you know. This would be provided by.
Yeah, yeah, we want this to make it harder. Yeah, so when I give you those documents moving forward, whatever information that you wanna add to make it easier, cause that's the intent. Is to get the information in the easiest format that's already put together, and make sure it's complete when it comes to you. You have everything you need, you could go through it, it's already stated, and then decide if it's adequate to adopt, that findings or not, but not trying to make it harder. Yeah. So. It's information they already required to, to provide to you, and just putting it in a different template. Really.
Other place to describe this. Where when you get asked these questions, it's like, okay, kind of walks you through what's neat, what do you need to know before you do this project? That to me is gonna be helpful to people if nothing else. It may be, yeah, there's a lot more reading, there's a little bit more they have to do, but. For the most part, I think it will help most people when they're doing these projects, to better understand what they need to know. Like if they say, well, I don't know if I'm in the flood plain, well, don't come to us, because you know, if you're next to a body of water. Because we have to know before we let you build. So don't come to us. You know, if you're doing something that's gonna impact erosion, or, you know, impact the lake, don't come to us, you have a plan. But it can be, it doesn't have to be a certified, the homeowner can do it, they just. They just have to make sure they're telling us how they're gonna control the erosion in the runoff. You know, if they're using a contract, if that, for us, that's not for us to judge. Right, that's sort of like if somebody is. Exactly, we're not policing that, we're just like, okay, their shoreline zone is certified, you're all good.
Is there a link in our thing to the website where they could find them?
Find the certified contractors?
No, 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 the. Water table. Flood plain. Elevation, new names. Website.
Yeah, the map service center could do that, we could add that to that.
I was gonna say.
And that's, that's a FEMA product that brings up, you just type in your street address, you know, twenty-eight Maple Street, and it comes up and shows you the flood plain for your address.
That would be good if they put that in there.
Yeah.
No, it's.
So at least it gives you like, hey, here's the elevation, I mean, realtors have to do that now. That's a requirement, all property sales have to, they have to put the panel number in the document.
Can we put that in there?
We can incorporate.
Somewhere.
Yep, and so this is, um.
Sure, we're.
This is the, um. The system that they're working on right now, I'm sorry, I just put it up there, so this is the ArcView. The layers aren't all added in yet, this is just kind of a, I said, I want a show and tell for the board tonight, cause I keep telling them it's almost done, and it's so close there, um. So he put this together, you know, we can add those layers on the side, we can add the layer that, um, you were talking about for the flood plain, we can. We can, um, pull in all kinds of layers that, that might be helpful, we don't want it to be. Too cluttered with stuff that, that doesn't, isn't necessary, but that's the kind of thing we could actually link in here.
Eventually, that's gonna be available on the town website.
Yes. Hopefully soon, yeah.
In the meantime, we gotta put the link that can go on that. Find it itself. And everybody.
So they're still connecting the data, this, um, I just wanted to. So they're still connecting the data, this, I just wanted to also show you.
Oh, we already paid him.
Yep.
He's not done.
Almost, almost done, very close.
And if we pay him, if it's not done.
So this is the permitting system, we've talked about this in the past, and this is our current portal that we've been updating, and so you will be able to search and get more detail on the applications. There will be the map here, it's not available yet, oh, they've done some of it since today. So I was going to show you, so you'll be able to see where the different permits are, it's not, it's not filled, filled out yet, but I had another example. Let's see. So this is another, an example of the different options that we have, that some of them we hadn't been using, so, and they have all kinds of templates for applications. And then this, so this is the, you can see the potential. And this is something that will be available to the public. So you can search, you know, the permit, and there's going to be different ways to, to search it, whether it's by property owner, I think those are the ones I gave her actually. And that, so then you can map out, show me all of where are all the accessory dwelling units, where are, you know, where are all the violations, that you'll be able to, to map some of the stuff, this obviously isn't Winthrop, but but so this, we're, we're getting so close to having this complete and available, I think it's going to be super helpful.
Along with a permit stay up.
In perpetuity, I believe, until we change systems, yeah. Yep. I, I would hope so at some point, it's, I don't think it's on the top of anyone's list, but I would love, I would love to, to have it creep towards the top, yeah, yeah. Scan everything. So yeah, yeah, we've said that too, I've been talking to the Public Works for a lot too, talking about locating, you know, culverts and catch basins, and we don't have that mapped, so. Wow, and you know, you, I'm sure you guys a lot even know more about this mapping than I do, I have some, some basic, you know, experience with it, but I am the one, right now to my knowledge, with the most experience in town, so feel free to offer suggestions. Oh, there's a lot of fun stuff we could do. Yep. Yep, I think I'm pretty close to the end here. The last thing. Oh, that there, were you, did you want to go through those, or did you want to have time to look at them?
Yes.
You were chatting, I look at examples. And I think what we've said, I've seen the number three. It's presented, right? If that worked, if it worked, so. You want chance to look at these, or have you looked at these?
No, they haven't received them until tonight.
You're operating?
These weren't included in the package.
No.
The law will recommend that they be. For next meeting. Back, what's the magic number, one, three, you want four of them, did you have any examples? I'm using. Way they present their problem.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of number one, number, number ten. Saying those two, I think should give. I think it shows a simple project, and I think it shows, the only thing I was suggesting is there's a lot of writing here. And if we do, when we do this, it would be sample plot, site plan for a new pool. And then we did, and say, simple plot plan for an addition and a new deck. So that way they would kind of know what the project is, again, the project description kind of raised up front, and then you show the details of why do you have these separate details.
It's, it's so easy to put online. I don't know that we need to have printed copies of everything when people come in, maybe have some common ones and print some ones that people need.
These online, these, these are to help applicants
Yeah.
Kind of sort through it, if you might even say, I mean, and if you have somebody that can't do something online, you can print one off, or that is not many people that say, I can't get to it on.
Some people have been to a few kitchen tables, helping them.
Eleven was missing two things, knowing more. Missing a couple of things though, wow. Well, where's the distance, like, where's the distance to the lake? Right there, no, it's not.
There's a lake.
No, it's not. Well, yeah, yeah, it's not there. Well, the hundred foot setback there, but the actual distance from this point to that point is not there. What is the setback rate?
With you.
I know.
Which will be built.
No, no, like, that corner to the water.
Need to.
It needs that number.
Or exactly.
Yep.
I changed, I put that in red on a change. I don't think I put, did they put drip line or might not have.
Or not. Two things we always had trouble with on the zoning board, people would measure down the slope, not the way it goes. And then people would give us their foundation lines for setback, and then you have that two foot soft it. We've got an example.
Yeah, I don't think I have drip edge in there anywhere, but I did change that, you know, the, yeah.
We need, is there another number, anybody else?
Okay.
Oh, you want to call it, but.
So.
I'd like to.
I just wondered if we're over complicating things a little? It's like, over here, these are all in the definitions of the ordinance, all you have to do is read the ordinance. You know, principal building. Okay, report yard spaces, server, only one lot, that's straight out of the ordinance.
Yeah, that is straight out of the ordinance.
So, I mean.
They just have to say how they meet the requirement. Because the board has to say, do they meet this criteria?
But if that's not in the fourteen.
Nope, but it's still in the ordinance of criteria they have to meet.
Okay.
All right, back to the. The one you're going to take this call.
Yep. We scanned them, so I can email them to you as well. If you want to mark them up or anything online, but I also gave you all red, red pens to take with you and mark them up.
Can I have one of them? Because now, are we on tape?
You can't have this one, because this one is my special left-handed one.
Are we being recorded?
We are.
Oh, good. I could have a red pen, so next time Anthony does something I don't like, I can just go shock.
All right, next item.
There's a couple of red sharpies.
This was not due to.
Yeah, and that's always a draft internal document that, that we're working off, so the next meeting, we don't have applications as a workshop, and we don't have, we don't have someone coming to speak, and we don't have aside finishing up what you're doing tonight. We don't have a topic that we're working on, so I wanted to see if you wanted to put anything in there so that I could prepare materials, so that was just a reminder. Yep.
We know.
The plots. Yep. I, I hope so. So I'll try to plan for that, I'd like to have some, something just in case, I would hate to waste, waste time if we had it.
Yeah.
So is there, is there anything else in those that, what do you think the next one you might like to approach on your top?
Well, Greg is thinking, I have, I have something. I'd be in a pain as usual. Never. This eleven paper copies, copy of the property deed, including all applicable easements, sufficient right title and interest. That's a little bit duplicitous, if you got the deed, you got the right title and interest.
Well, sometimes people have a purchase and sale.
Well, then you, you need to say, like, and that could happen in the case where someone leases the property and wants to do a project, you know, build to suit kind of thing, so you need a letter from the West Sea, or is it the West Hora, which one is it?
Well, I like to have the deed as well, because the deed can spell out if there are easements or restrictions.
Well, yeah, but that's the deed, but then, it's sufficient right title and interest, you might have to get the project developer who has leased the property, you get written permission from the board. The board knows the project developers in here, they're not the owner.
Yeah, they, they, they would need sign off, the agent would need sign off from the property owner, in that instance, right, because they're not on the deed.
Right.
So sometimes it's going to be one of the same.
Well, I'm just saying, maybe.
Oh, that's right.
Now that. So that they've been to. What's your right turn for a lawyer? EPO, you know. Employee. You know, we see, they have their party, employees in all that. All of them, but with what they presented, it created a question in my mind, is how did that come together? Well, I'm sure, I'm sure the integrity of the project and washes. And. And that.
Forward, yeah.
All of the pieces that are inscribed and helps with that, that evolution.
That's one more thing. Hey, you, you're asking the owner or applicant for eleven copies of all the materials, typically the town did that, okay? And you're asking the owner for the names and mailing addresses, tax map lot number, et cetera, of everyone within five hundred feet? Typically, the town did that. And then you want the, the owner to give you address envelopes, address to the butters? Okay, typically, the town did that, why, why the change? Why put that extra burden on?
Because the planning board's planning now. And, and so we need staff time to, to prepare materials for planning, I don't have time to do that. And do other things.
Need that, put a stamp on the envelope too, though. Oh, oh, I guess, I guess all I'm saying is, if you want Winthrop to grow and be a vibrant community, and the more difficult and complicated we make this process, the less welcome we welcome we'll, welcoming we'll see.
Look, some of that people who are.
Oh, yeah.
Forced us to go to the machine, to go out like. I know what's mine, and it's my art, I breathe it out.
We, I get it, we.
I understand, so somewhere to the bounce.
Yeah.
When you did. What is needed. At the same time, oil is on him, you need to doctorize and cross the teeth. Doc, you're going to duck, you're going to duck, so where do you do the option? We go to corporate, some kind of activities, but it's that bouncing there, right? And if we're deployed where we're to describe.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree, I mean, one, one time at the zoning board, we had a Miss Maine who thought that that was going to buy her some leniency, it didn't work. She said this, the property, property pin was here, and the neighbor said it was here. And we told her that if she testified the pin was there, you know, she'd get her permit, so she got her permit. Then, of course, the body property owner had a survey and the pin wasn't there. And she either had to tear off her addition or pay a huge fine. And, you know, but she knew. Yeah. I'm just, I'm not objecting to anything here.
You don't want seeing business unfriendly or development unfriendly, I suspect, right? So, well, I'm going to have some help soon, and so if, if you all as a board decide you want staff to do that, we'll have someone, but I, but I haven't been doing it, you know, as much because.
I mean, a person has to actually come into town office, find the assessor. Right?
Not anymore, because it's going to be able to do it right on through this permitting system. You can click on it, say five hundred feet, and it'll give you a whole list of addresses.
But then there's a question of, they have to send anything out certified mail to prove that, or that they just have to say mailing a spoof of receipt.
If they give us the envelopes, we'll mail the notice.
Okay.
So they just, they just make up, you know, the envelopes, either labels or handwritten, and then we put the notice in and we mail it, so we know it went out with appropriate language and stuff.
Perfect. I'm done, I promise you, I'm saying, that's a meeting.
No, 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 I, I like, I featured the input. It did get reported, anyway. What do you think will be the next thing you'll want to work on after that, so if I have time to start putting together? You know, I don't want to waste a minute.
I think the thing still on the top of it. We had two big topics in Halloway, one was a subdivision, revised subdivision ordinance. Gives us some issues with our subdivision ordinance, forty years old, and that's nitrate instead of phosphorus and a few other bad things. So that was one, we need to deal with the subdivision plan. And number two was, you know, do we want to finalize and deal with the cluster development? Now, those were the two questions that we had, kind of lingering out there. And did we, did we address it by changing the size of the order, you know, we did that? Did that address, is that the only issue we had? Because for cluster development, they still have to have, you know, do we want to print that out, just take a look at that again? You know, if there's anything else for housing, is there anything else, we had this discussion, you know, like, also addressing the requirements for apartments, you know, if we wanted to utilize those buildings downtown and have them in a place where they could be revitalized for debt, for apartments, right now, our ordinance is not conducive to that. Because of the way it's rich. They can only have like two units per floor or something weird like that, it's like, well, it's a giant mill, that doesn't make any sense. So we were going to talk about that again. So, I mean, housing's number one on our list, I feel like those are all interconnected, we should talk about housing.
I agree.
You know, those are big topics that align with the comprehensive plan, that's what I think we should be talking about.
My promise. Closer is important, we've got somebody that wants to.
Well, I think, I think we solved that with our ordinance already, but I, I just want to kind of at least revisit that.
I'm responding because three days ago, there was a party on the western, random raid. And they want to add small building, they're probably want to add. One expert said the state law, and so.
Small houses.
And they supersede the local. Just like. And so it's going on.
Another thing.
Yeah. We're doing the tiny houses.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe at this point, it might be appropriate to mention that the TIF at the middle, the Tax and Center Financing Arrangement, is going to end sometime in the last two thirds, I think, of two thousand twenty six. And it's, I would say that it's highly unlikely to be renewed unless the owners or developer plans some more extensive use of the property, which would most likely involve apartments. So if there's some way that our ordinance is going to block that, you might want to look at dealing with that ahead of time.
That's, that's what, it has water, it's in the building, it has parking, there's
Yeah.
everything there, but our ordinance definitely is getting.
Yeah, I just, just thought I'd throw it out there, so you know, that's over the horizon, a little ways.
That's good to know, there's kind of a dig on it too, because we, you know, we didn't know there's a lot of opportunity down there, we're kind of blocking.
Well, you know, it's, even if they start now, they're going to have to find a developer, you're going to have to find a bank. They're going to have to look to the town for some help with the new TIF. You know, it's, it's going to be a three-year process, but it won't go anywhere if they look at the ordinance and say, we can't do this, you know, so.
We can't change the ordinance. Yes. But if you change the ordinance, it's going to take a while to, because we have to change it, and then we have to improve it, and then we have to, hey, go over the town council, and we have to areas and all that.
Yeah.
Right, well, I mean, he can know it's coming.
I mean, I, it's a true.
Shit that. Yeah, yeah.
I, I mean that, I'm going to try to get to more meetings. And the, the hard part for me is, I spent thirty years on the zoning board, and I was part with David Lee the last time that we reviewed the entire ordinance and tried to clean it up, make it easier for citizens to use. So it's hard for me to sit here and not say too much, and if I say too much or overstep my bounds, any of you can just say, hey, you know, just, I won't take it in any bad way. To be, to be perfectly frank, when I heard that you were going to be the new chair, I was quite pleased, I know you do a good job. Was that for Brown losing?
Yeah, I just give you a heads up that the May, um, meeting, the first meeting in May, there'll be, there should be quite a few applications, because there are a number of ones that I, I just keep setting aside because they're not complete. So it might be that they all come back around the same time, so, uh, you may have, you may have a lot of applications coming up.
Responding, trying to see them, the board, if it's possible, to the board, yes, doing. Different schedule, in other words. Meeting a week, or a meeting once a week, or.
He had the originally scheduled sort of, they have a board meeting and then a workshop, we could always drop the workshop. And just say, okay, we have too many cases, if, if there's six or eight applicants, if we can't get to them, we really should drop the workshop. That's great to move things forward, but we really should make an absolute weight.
And I agree with that, I'm talking really to that.
If, if we're really at a point where we can't meet that need with our two, two-month meeting, that we, we, I would say, I would propose we would take it up at that time. I, I think it'd be, I'd be really hard pressed for us to get six or eight cases every two weeks, that would be. An incredible increase like we've never seen before, so it's unlikely that we would have that. That probably just profit.
It's going over, and so we aren't even.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, ideally, they're easier. Yeah, we don't need to have spend half an hour trying to pick up where they are. It, it, it is, in certain cases, I think they're going to be very valuable.
Sure.
It's your chair, squeaky. I know, I know it is, because I, because I sit in that chair at the town council meetings.
Right, nothing to add. I'm, I'd just like to say that having a liaison here is great, because. We just got a little tidbit on.
Well, we sure did. It's my job.
He can also grease the skids going the other way, and tell them what we're working on, so when we send something to the council.
Anything that helps. Get that mill going is not going to need a lot of greasing, let me tell you. A lot of.
We go to all that work devising the ordinance, you can help us, the council.
Oh, I will.
The other thing we have is, um, some tidbits on the equipments, the accumulating, the one you've already proved, or recently, but there's some, some. Might have taken, need to be finished, and we're fixing to get those taken care of in the major kind of things, but you can help us grease this kid's going. Houses and that, that would be a problem, so appreciate you being. Don, you also?
I'm all set.
Andy?
I'm all set, thanks.
And you all almost figured it out, but the property, the property. Don, or, or, um, on the law drive. It's been, it recently purchased, let's say, within the last year. Been purchased, and they're in the process of doing something with that property. A lot of trees are on, and what we understand, the D E P is in.
All I know is I got a notice because I posted it, that it had applied for something, D E P, that's all I know.
So, uh, Shoreland Zone, Shoreland, um, looks like a building complication.
I think Don told us they were planning an expansion towards the road.
Yeah, a very small expansion, um, but there were trees flagged, someone said there was tree flagged.
Of a crazy, so, uh.
Mark is looking.
And Mark has looked at.
Mark told me. But they have to come to us.
They've going to come to you for the expansion.
For any, anything within the shoreline zone, they have to come to us. I mean, theoretically. Theoretically, if they cut a single tree in the shoreline zone, that is a state violation, they have to come see us, period. Now, what's defined as a tree, I think it's something like four inches or eight inches or some diameter, really. Well, I'm just saying, you can't cut a single tree within two hundred and fifty feet of the water. Now, Mark, if the tree is dead, Mark can kind of authorize that, right? It's like, okay, they can kill that tree, but they're supposed to.
If it's a, if there's a target, otherwise it's habitat, they can't just take down a dead tree.
Well, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, so again, it's, it's, there's, and I'm not as worried about a tree as clear cutting and making plans for an addition without coming to us. Because if those trees get dropped first, it's pretty hard to fix that after.
That's my whole, that's my whole.
And hopefully, they understand that, that they cannot cut those trees down, because they will have to do a revegetation plan, and blah, blah, blah.
I'm not so sure that it hasn't been, some misunderstandings in the past where people get a D E P permit, and then they think they don't have to have a town permit.
Right.
And that's just not the case.
Well, that's Susan Brill, I believe, I can follow up with them.
I misunderstood Mark, but I thought he said he looked at that, you know. So, are they dead? Some of them are, and some of them are dangerously public. If they have a whole. You, you, you know, you need to get permission to cut them if they're dangerously close to the camp.
Yeah.
Then there's a whole routine in the ordinance about so, so much percentage of limbs, so thick, yeah, there's a whole.
Planting.
Right, and you have to do replanting, and then there's a, the vegetation plan requirement, and there's an urban cover requirement, all those you can.
Yeah, it's kind of be, it's kind of the opening requirement.
I don't think there's a choice, if they're cutting significant trees, they have to come here, it's in the state, in the state shoreline protection zone requirements, and it's in our ordinance, oh.
They are coming to you, um, this is something I've met with them on the, met on the site. They have trees that they want to take down, and Mark said he did go look at them, so if there's more than, I, I'm not sure what that looks like, but I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A yellow ribbon.
So I can, I'll find out. Yeah. Yeah.
Why would they have to come to us for the expansion if they're not moving more than twenty-five years?
Because it is an expansion within, um, seventy-five feet, so it's the thirty percent. Um, it's a very small expansion, but it's still expanding the footprint of a non-conforming structure in the shoreline.
Problem property.
Yeah, you, for anything, so it's.
Let's put it on her techno post, and so she didn't move, what we are.
No, it doesn't matter, though, that's, that's a, you cannot add a structure, you cannot expand a structure within the shoreline zone, which is two hundred and fifty feet from the shoreline, without coming to the planning board, that's in the ordinance. And also in the state guidance.
If it's over a thousand dollars, you got to get a permit, and then it's up to Mark, I think, to decide. To issue the permit or say that you have to go to the.
Table.
Planning board, I think.
Tables, tables pretty clear that you.
Yeah.
In the shoreline zone, it has to come to planning.
Right, but the, the process goes through Mark, you go to Mark to get the permit?
Mark goes, yeah, Mark and Don, and everything goes through that.
Right, and then Mark would tell them.
Yes.
You know.
Yeah.
You need both, I think. You need a P B R, or permit by rule at least.
Or, but the, you're going, they have to get, but still, we need to kind of find.
I would say.
So.
They want those in there.
D E P.
I do, so I have language on these, the proposed information that says that, once you apply to the planning board, you don't touch your property, you don't apply, and then go have Mark approve some trees to be removed, you don't apply, and then put a shed, you apply, and you leave it. Until, because they're representing in their application to the board, this is what exists. So I'll highlight that, because I don't know if that's what's happened in the past, but I believe that's what should happen.
Yeah.
It shouldn't change once you start looking at it.
Usually, we'll say, we'll figure out where they are in the D E P. You know, we'll ask that, have you applied to D E P, if they approved it yet, before they even come down. You know, ideally, we would see the permit, when it would already be approved, before we come to us, but we've conditionally approved it that they get the D E P permit as well.
Mm-hmm.
If you're cutting substantial trees, we've said, okay, you've applied to them, you don't have a ruling yet, but. As a condition of this permit, of our approval, you will get your D E P permit approved as written, then you, then, then Mark is good to go with approving your application.
Where you go, I mean, if, if things haven't changed, the permit by rule is ten days, you send it in, if you don't hear back from them for ten working days, you got it.
Yeah.
So the smart thing to do is to send that in before you ever get here.
That's, that's typically what we ask, if they've already sent it in and they haven't received word back, then sometimes it's like, okay, well, maybe the timing didn't work out, but.
Well, ten, ten days, and you got your permit, if they don't notify you, they can't, it's too late.
That's a D E P, D E P.
D E P.
Yeah, yeah, because I know that they're trying to do the right thing, they, we met with them, they're contractor on site, they're very aware of the ordinances, they had a, they had a sketch plan at one point. So I'm not sure what's going on there now, but they were going down the path they're supposed to, so I'll see. One seventy-two, nothing. So now they're at risk. They're at risk now, if they don't get a permit to.
Ready, second, on paper? Oh, thank you.
Thank you all. Good to see you. Good to see you.
Yeah, I, I think it's going to have to be every other meeting. What is your idea? Oh, you're welcome. Oh, I'm watching the minutes, I'm not, I haven't been here.
You're missing a good time.
These minutes, eighteen minutes you've put out, linking them to different things. So.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, what I'm doing.
So it turns out that the state statute allows that you to use the video recording, but we still want to have. Who made the motions, and, and then attach the findings, but I think other than that.
It's nice to go out and look at the minutes, and not have to go searching around to find the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Record it.
Yeah, and I, I can win there a lot of times if I, I can't remember something, or, yes, please.
You watch this, watch this.